Okay. Our heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Lord, I ask that you bless the members that are attending this board meeting tonight, and give all of us travel mercies on our way home. Please, Lord, help each of us to make the right decisions for the students, parents, and all the employees of the Stokes County Schools. In your name I pray. Amen.
Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as it stands? If you can speak into the mic, Mr. Rogers. Thank you.
If we could add just one brief thing, I know Mr. Robertson, Ryan, myself, and you were at Nancy Brown, I mean, at Poplar Spring. Yeah. Yeah. So, the fencing, we need to address for Ricky to have an action to remove the Pine Grove.
You mean Pine Grove.
Yeah, the Pine Grove fencing, there were some woods there. So, we probably need to go to action. I think we've discussed it with Dr. Rice as potentially. They said, Ricky said, just put it on the agenda.
So, would we like to add that as a discussion item?
Yeah, discussion is fine, or...
Item K, Pine Grove.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other...
Fencing.
Fencing, okay. Are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That passes. Next, we have the good news portion of the meeting. Dr. Rice?
It's our pleasure to recognize Mr. Chris Bottoms, principal at Walnut Cove Elementary School, who recently completed the Distinguished Leadership in Practice Program. The program's a year-long leadership development program for practicing school principals designed by the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association, and sponsored by the North Carolina Alliance for School Leadership and Development. The leadership of a school principal is by far one of the most important factors in school quality. By completing this very rigorous program, the DLP graduates have demonstrated their commitment to continuous improvement by working to improve their leadership skills as they simultaneously improve their schools. We are proud to include Mr. Bottoms in the ranks of successful DLP completers, and that is by Dr. Shirley Prince, NC Papa Executive Director. We would like to recognize Mr. Bottoms and give him a hand. Mr. Bottoms, if you'll join the board for a picture, and we will get you that certificate.
Yeah, that'd be better.
You just sit back and play point guard.
I told you.
Again, congratulations to Mr. Bottoms, and thank you for all your hard work, sir. Thank you. Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone signed up, Mrs. Buljack, for public comments, or Mr. Johnson?
Yes, we do. We have one person who signed up for public comments tonight. There's a three-minute time limit on the presentation. Donnie Smith.
And the reason why I'm here is because I oppose the school board's decision to change start times. It puts burdens on working families. I've spoken to nearly everyone, and I can't find very few that support the decision. In the last meeting, you were praising the staff on how good a job they've done with the COVID task, but you do not value their input. Most of the ones that I've talked to are afraid to say anything, fear of losing their jobs. I personally am grateful for the job that they've done, and I truly appreciate their service to our county. On the other hand, I'm very disappointed in this board. It should be your job to interview the community. You should be the one that the teachers and staff and families go to for solutions. It should never be a job of a computer. When you survey only 1,400 people, and you have 5,600 students, 25% should never determine the results of the 75%. It should be your job as a school board member to be the mediator between the state and the county on how things should run in our county. You're the only representative that we have as parents and taxpayers. Since the northern and southern districts greatly differ from the western district, you should only have surveyed the northern and southern districts since they were the only ones who were truly affected. When I'm hearing the possibility of 16 bus drivers quit, and that's disturbing, and that's what I'm hearing, you can't find replacements for the six buses that you currently have vacant. Meanwhile, you're treating these bus drivers as if they are nothing. But it takes a special kind of person to drive each group of these kids. These drivers should be treated as teachers. You don't ask the elementary teacher to go teach a high school class. Why not? For one, the licenses don't allow it. Secondly, I doubt the high schoolers would think too highly of a teacher talking to them as a kindergartner. It takes different personalities for different people. You're putting, you're adding stress to a job that's already stressful enough as it is. When you're asking someone to work outside of their comfort zone, you're asking for major problems. You're going against the foundations of the school system when you're ignoring feedback from the staff and community. Then we wonder why dropout rates are increasing and test scores are dropping, and why people are choosing other places for their kids to go. It has to do with morale. When the confidence of the workers is no longer there, it gets passed along to the listening bodies, whomever they are. These just happen to be their kids and coworkers. When I talk to staff, I hear that I'm leaving, or how much longer do I have to retire? You know management is doing a poor job of managing whenever things like that are taking place. I believe you looked at previous decision to hire management buddies instead of hiring local people who knows the job. You're creating problems that we're facing.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Next, on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. If there are no comments to be made. We have item A, approval of regular session minutes for June 21st, as well as approval of county commissioners' joint session minutes for June 10th. Were there any additions or corrections there to those minutes?
Make a motion to approve consent as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That carries. Next, we have discussion agenda item A, the Interactive Board Replacement Plan, demos by ClearTouch and SmartBoard.
Good evening, board members. We've invited our top two teacher choices to demo the boards that we are going to want to replace in our schools. Our first up is ClearTouch with Sarah Lowey, and David Maynard is on there as well. He's joining us. I've invited members, while she's getting ready, I've invited members who were involved in the process there with us, Delala Brady, Amanda Campbell, and other media coordinators, Sonya Norman, our technicians here for tech support. All the principals were invited to come as well, and to let their teachers know if they wanted to come see a live demo of the boards to know what's coming in their schools. So, anyway, here we go.
Thank you. So, David, I'm sorry to interrupt now. Sarah, about Mr. Brady, what did you do? This is David Maynard, construction, our sales manager, so I just wanted to go ahead and take this off.
Yeah, I apologize for not being there just with you all. Definitely wouldn't be there. Unfortunately, I had a laxity on Saturdays. I know a lot on the booth right now. But, you know, we're still very excited for this opportunity to speak with Karen, and actually, we've done multiple virtual demos in the last group. And just really excited, you know, real quick before I turn over, I know we don't have a lot of time here, but a little bit about ClearTouch. So, we are, our corporate office is in Greenville, South Carolina, so we're just around the corner. Personally, I live south of Long, I live in North Carolina. And Sarah here, just to figure a little more about her, but she is a former educator as well. She's at local, was also in North Carolina, and she's one of our implementation specialists. And that simply means that she goes in there, she works with districts. It's not enough, really. I mean, we really earn anything that we make on these panels is we really truly earn it after the sale. And that's why I have a technology department that answers your calls 90% of the time. It's technology, which something that some point you're gonna have a question, but we're gonna be there for y'all, that's in Greenville, South Carolina as well. And also building capacity, which, when we talk about capacity with teachers, really what we're talking about is building confidence out when they're in that classroom, that technology enhances what they're building. And that's where somebody like Sarah comes in, really works well with the teachers. She's walked through those offices. She's been in that classroom setting, and she's now been training for a long time. And I do want to speak to our partner, Exo Tech, who's not there. It's owned by Mirez, and she's actually a certified trainer on our panels as well. So, the partnership that we have with them is really amazing because you don't just get the one side with us, you're also gonna get somebody who's an absolutely professional on the end, and she can answer, by the way, they only sell at the on panel, so they know the product well, and they have a ton of problems with it. So, you know, again, we're really excited for the opportunity. We appreciate your guys' time tonight, and please ask questions by all means, and that's why we're here. And I'm gonna turn over to Sarah, but we really want to just interact as possible. She's gonna show you some really cool things, and some neat things that districts are utilizing all over the United States, but other than the ClearTouch panels. So, again, appreciate your time. Sarah?
All right. We're gonna keep Dave Lowey on screen. He's not gonna go away. All right? He's gonna put you right up there in the top right-hand corner there. So, as Dave said, I'm Sarah Lowey. I'm the ClearTouch PD and implementation manager, and what that means is I literally go in after the sale and make sure that our customers have success. I get you set up with your licenses. I walk you through the whole implementation process. We handle your professional development. We customize what that looks like, and we work very closely with you through all of that year one and year two, as you roll this out, to make sure you get the most out of your investment. We're really heavy on services and support. As David said, I used to be a teacher. I taught middle school and high school social studies, and I'm from Norfolk, Virginia. Okay, see some head nodding here. And I was a classroom teacher for about 10 years, and I've been in the industry for about 10 years of doing this. I think what we do at ClearTouch a little differently is we're really invested in that teacher experience. So, you're gonna see us really heavy on that end user support, and we conduct professional development in a unique way. We also have built out a ClearTouch Certified Trainer Workshop that allows districts to build capacity. That Certified Trainer Workshop is aligned to ESSA, which says that professional development should be ongoing, collaborative, job embedded, sustainable. So, we want to build your in-house experts, and we work with you very closely to build out that sustainable PD plan that just works for teachers. I know what it's like. I've been in the classroom where new technologies dropped on me, and I got a two-hour training that spun my head, and I went back and had to deal with, you know, alternative high school kids, and referrals, and everything else. And so, it's really about meeting your teachers where they are. We meet our students where they are, and so, we are really invested in meeting your teachers where they are. So, this is a Windows 10 computer. That's what you're looking at right here. Just a big Windows 10 touchscreen computer, and that's really important when it comes to teachers adopting new technology. If they're already working in that Windows environment, they connect that existing desktop computer, they put our software on it, they open up their Google Docs. I'm doing this Zoom call. I have a video lab in my home. Well, it's my daughter's house. I don't have good internet at home, so I travel to Chesapeake every day. But I have a video lab where I've been doing professional development with teachers since last year. And so, really, our teachers were calling me, okay, how do I do a Google Meet? Share my screen with ClearTouch panel. I'm like, here's how you do it, you know, and I would get on there and walk them through it. And that's what's really important about this Windows environment, because it is that Windows environment. Sorry. Teachers can just fire up that Google Meet, share their screen, and whatever they're doing, the kids at home are gonna see. So, we're showing you that example here. They just wanna Zoom call, so it doesn't matter what that video conferencing is in that Windows platform. We do implement all of our software. You're not gonna pay any ongoing subscription, no recurring costs. You're going to receive three key softwares. The first one is called ClearTouch Command, and that is your remote management console. We will custom build that cloud account, and you can add your IT department to remotely manage all of the ClearTouch panels across your district. You can log in. Anyone can log in. You can put multiple users in that cloud account. You can insert access. You can send messages, emergency messaging, text messaging. You can remote in and switch inputs. You can tell all the panels to turn off and shut down at certain times of the day to conserve your energy. That's all included. Now, that runs off an app on the Android OS of the panels, so all Android, or excuse me, all ClearTouch panels, all panels in the industry have the native OS of Android. Teachers can always jump over there and use some of those native tools. We lost name, we mentioned back here a minute. We have that on-screen toolbar right here that's that really locked up ready tools to use. So, I'm gonna go ahead and pop back over to that PC environment. So, when you're connecting your computer, it's gonna be HDMI one or two, and in your command account, you can actually rename that port or that input, and that input will say computer, teacher, computer, whatever you want. So, the ability to do things like that. So, that command account is that account we built custom for you, and you can manage all of your panels. We also give you ClearTouch Collage, which is your casting. It is device-based. It works on anything. You would just need to connect our app. It works on Chromebooks, which I understand your student device is in Chromebooks. We can cast six Chromebooks simultaneously, and soon to be nine. In our next version, our best next iteration, we'll be able to do nine devices simultaneously, and the screen will just divide itself. So, I have my phone right here, and I think I'm still connected to network. So, I'm gonna show you what that looks like. If you have an iOS device, and you guys wanna play around with this later, you can actually find ClearTouch Collage in the Apple Store. I crossed over to the dark side, I'm an Android person, so you can go to our website and download the Android if you wanted to as well. So, I'm gonna start now. I have permission mode, which means the students can't just randomly cast to the panel. And now, I'm walking around the room, and I'm casting from my phone. Again, teachers can cast from their devices. It's all happening across your wireless network infrastructure. I can even do some neat things like this. Now, I have a live document camera. Maybe the students are working on a project over here. I have it displayed up here on the ClearTouch panel. I can pick up my pen and do that content, and then push it to my cloud account if I want to. So, I can go ahead and disconnect, so I can self-disintroduce. So, as every device connects to the ClearTouch panel with collage, it'll just pile the screen out at the six times. Okay? The teacher can also manage that. You can connect multiple students simultaneously, and you can see the student device name. It'll sit right there on the list, so I can actually make this by managing device and walking around the room and click students to shove up on the panel. They better be ready. Right? I'm walking around, great job. Show the rest of the class, walk through your thought processes, you know, what are you thinking when you create this? So, it's a great way for students to showcase their work in their comfort zone. Social distancing, had a lot of teachers using that for students to stay in their safe space and share their work up to the channel. And now, I use the students' work to continue the teaching and learning in the classroom. So, that's collage. And then, the last thing we give you, actually has two pieces to it. We give you our Snowflake software. So, Snowflake is not your traditional whiteboarding software. It is really built for student collaboration, and it's built with a different philosophy inside of their DMI. And teachers do not have to create a Snowflake file or a Snowflake, you know, presentation to use it. I literally can open it up. I have a website here. I have a blank whiteboard here that I type some stuff on. This is another whiteboard over here. But I can open it up and access my Google Docs. Sign in to my Google Docs, bring my Google slides right up here. There's my content all here in one landscape. We can divide the screen into multiple simultaneous zones in Snowflake, and that allows us to do things like that tabletop. So, we also have some other configurations. So, let's pause for a second. I'll take this to COVID. My teachers, is that okay, Sarah? I want a whiteboard, and I want my Google slides, and I want my websites, or whatever. And I'm like, well, here's how you do it, and you're sharing your screen. Cue it all up. Cue it all up. Save layout, and then call it up at any time, sharing your screen, and then you can go in and out of the screen for these zones pretty easily and seamlessly. I can also, in the Canvas, which is the whiteboarding app in Snowflake software, call it a live multiple webpages. When I was a social studies teacher, I had this lot of online content, and I would tab, right, multiple webpages across the bottom of my computer screen, and I would get lost myself, period, let's be honest. My computer was probably screaming at me. Well, I can actually go in, cue those all up, save this file for the rest of the day, and open up L1, L2, L3. It's all there for me. Do your teachers use YouTube content? We have the ability to pull in a YouTube video right here in this one canvas, and I can't talk and type at the same time. So, maybe I want, thanks, Dave, maybe I want a video on primary resources. We're learning about primary and secondary sources with my students. And I call up that, and it might be a YouTube filter, so let's see this one. Yep. Delete that one. What happens when I pull in that YouTube video? It's not gonna get played, and we are taking the ad off the front. It's gonna go right into YouTube content. We are taking, it's not gonna stop the video and play an ad, and it's not gonna show anything crazy at the end. We've also taken out the recommended playlist, and we've taken out the comments. So, now, I've got this YouTube content clean, free of those ads that can be questionable for me as an educator, so I'm not gonna dive in over the desk and shut my computer off in the middle of construction if something happened. It's all there for me. I can cue it up, save ads. So, again, taking that down to the philosophy, teachers don't have to create anything ahead of time. I can do it all on the fly in the moment. I can go into, if I didn't get one of those, Snowflake, I can just go into Windows and cue up my Google Docs right in here in the front browser. Okay? Another thing we have in Snowflake software, and also have a piece that's really important here as well, on the Google screen. In the Snowflake software, we have the Lessons Activities app. So, the Lessons Activities is a community of interactive, engaging lesson activities that really need that student practice component of lesson plan design. Okay? So, it's for that student practice moment. I've done my direct instruction using my Google Sites, my PDFs, my websites, whatever it is I'm already using, and now I want the students to practice. I can go into that community on the fly and remote and search for anything here that's already there. There are thousands of lesson activities. There's an entire team of, we call them New Tech teachers, the New Tech content team. They are actually full-time teachers that work part-time for New Tech. It's a global content development team, so you'll find stuff in there in different languages that you're really good in. It's really good for some of your foreign language teachers. They like to go in there and find content in a native language. But it's an activity community or repository, if you will. So, I can go in there and then search for, I have a filter for some, for elementary right now, so if I'm looking to, but I can go in and search for content in that community. I can also log into my cloud account. Search options that have built in elementary. But right here, it's kinda hard for you guys to see, but there's something that says sign in to Snowflake Web. There is a web piece that is connected to this. You receive five Snowflake Web accounts for ClearTouch panel, and it's designed like that on purpose. We don't want you to run out of licenses, and we want you to be able to get access to your TTE teachers, and to your STEM teachers, and to your curriculum people, and to even your, I guess some districts that have substitute teachers access to Snowflake Web. So, it's really designed to be something that grows exponentially for you. You manage those licenses in-house. We don't care if they have a ClearTouch panel or not. You can give them access to Snowflake Web, and they can do some really cool things in Snowflake Web, not just search the community and build out like content, but in the web account, I can go in here and set up my classes. So, I think some of your schools are using Google Classroom. So, we have a Google Classroom. All right, I think I got locked out because it sat there so long. We just logged back in. We have a Google Classroom integration, where I actually would pull in the student rosters, and teachers can just click through a wizard. Can't type and talk at the same time. And set up their classes. And once they have their classes set up, they can send any of that interactive content to students to complete on their browser-enabled device. So, imagine this. You may have a group of students working at the ClearTouch panel in multiple zones. You have two zones side by side. The students are doing interactive content, they're racing against each other, or maybe you have one activity in one zone and a separate activity in another zone, and the kids switch off, right? So, it's like a station rotation or a center. Again, there's interactive content ready to go for you guys in there. Maybe you've got that going on, and you've got other kids working on an activity you sent them to do on their device. Okay? So, now, you've got everybody in class engaged, and the student account actually allows students to not only complete the activities I sent to them, but the students can build their own activities. Probably over the last year, we've learned more than ever before. That students love to create content, right? They love to create content on the internet, whether we walk into it or not. So, we just in that ability. So, I'm gonna go right in here to many students, and you guys can see that real quick. And there is that important classroom roster integration. They just pull in their rosters, and the students would sign in with Google. That's hugely important. They don't have to remember any additional credentials. The students would pull it up their Chromebooks, go to snow dot ly, which is the same website that teachers go to. They choose sign in, sign in with Google, and they're right into their dashboard. So, I'm gonna walk you through real quick what that looks like. Here are my lesson activities. Oh, by the way, the teacher wanted to create. This goes back to that differentiation for teachers, right? When I said we meet teachers where they are, there's existing content in there for those teachers that go, I just want something that I can use right now, please. There's content in there for your teachers and state level. Then you're gonna have teachers that go, you know what? I found something in the community that I wanna edit to meet my needs. Anything that you find in the community and teachers, as soon as they employ it, they edit it to meet their needs. So, now, we can have that teachers need, right? We're gonna have those teachers that say, I like this, and we'll tweak it a little bit. Then you're gonna have, I call the initiative teachers, and I wanna create my own, because I don't, I just, I know what I want. And these are literally templates, guys. There are 16 different lesson activity templates, like a Thomas for assessment, you can grade those if I want to, all of them can be sent to the students in practice mode. So, once the activity is actually sent to the student, then the student will log into their account. So, this is all included. There's nothing additional here when it comes to that. You can actually take this one, send to students, because I've already set up my class. This is what I love about the ClearTouch solution, and that is the ability to differentiate. I was an inclusion teacher, so I had students in my classroom that had different needs. Seventh grade social studies, but I still had to make sure I met their needs. So, I don't have to send that activity to everybody. I can send it to just those students in class that need it. Okay? So, I can click now, click now. I can set a send date for today or in the future. I can also set a due date if I wanted to, and then choose send the assignment. In the student dashboard, it's just the student dashboard right here. So, you can copy your browser, by the way. So, I can drag them both up together. In the student dashboard, that assignment will sit there, and the student will hit play. Now, again, they're on their Chromebook, they're on their browser-enabled device. They can even do this on the phone if they want to. They're just gonna log in, complete this activity. And at this point, the students will just drag and drop, answer that content, and then submit. The students will get that question-by-question right now. I'm hearing Miss Lowey's gonna be mad at me if I didn't do that button. And then, the teacher can go back and do that progress and see that individual, individualized student data. And not only can I see that individual student data, but I can also send feedback to that student. And I can personalize the feedback. I can say, you know what? I can send text feedback, but now, this was an ask that was asked of us last April, I believe, right after the little film card on all of us, and our teachers were using this for the remote learning needs. We want the ability to send audio and video feedback to... We want the ability to send audio and video feedback to them, because we only had text. And within about three weeks, we had that capability. That's what's really cool about our software partners, they're very responsive to what teachers request. And those teachers continually get added, and we're not going to charge them anything extra for any future testing from the future. Okay, that's all included, the price they pay. Okay? And then the last thing we can do in that cloud account is we can do live interactive polling. And I think I just jumped right in, because my nerves got the better of me, but we certainly do have the ability to do live polling, so if you could, would do me a favor? Go ahead, and if you have your phone with you, you can take out your phone, open up the camera app on your phone. I put my teacher hat on, guys. And all you have to do is hold your camera up to that QR code, and then a little webpage will pop up. You just tap that webpage to join. Or, if you want to just open up a browser and go to ansr.it/7778. And then as you guys join, I'm going to get a little message that you're joining here, it's going to go, "Hop, hop, hop." I know it's asking for your name, but I promise you, I won't show anybody's names on the screen, okay? It's all going to be completely anonymous. We have had multiple teachers over this past year using this to connect with their kids in and out of the classroom. It's super duper easy. I have a teacher in, because it's San Antonio, early college high school. And she said, "Sarah, I have 16 kids at home, 16 kids in class simultaneously, I got to teach them all together, how do I make sure the kids at home are with me?" Well, I showed her polling, and there's a, there is one poll question typed in here that allows me to take a picture and send it. So she had, it was math, algebra, or college level math. And she had the kids work out the problem at home, take a picture, and send it to the panel. And so now the kids in class and the kids at home felt really connected. So now that you're all are connected, thank you for joining, you can continue joining by YouTube next one over there at the top, and then just begin. And this is just a text question type, so just like all of your other polling tools that your teachers may have used in the past, or may use now, and X5, they can continue using those. We have multiple choice, the option of choice. We also have text up to 160 characters. So you guys can just go ahead and type in your answer, and I promise you, it's going to be completely anonymous here on the screen. Okay? It did ask you for your name when you joined the poll. And so that just means later, if I wanted to, I could export a CSV and see how all the students responded, and take a look at that data, analyze that data. Use it to drive a line structure the next day, or in class, if you use this as a warm-up, I can use this as an exit ticket. So teachers are comfortable with and understand the use of new technology, that's huge. User friendliness, and easy to navigate. I am literally a Windows 10 environment and a Chrome browser right now. And I have conducted hundreds and hundreds of P E's with thousands of teachers. And when I show them how to do this, it's usually one or two, five or 10 minutes, here's how it works, and then they're off to the races. Intuitive is really what it needs to be. Ease of use, ease of use, meets the needs, you're the friendliest of all the teachers. Teachers, students, these, student accessibility. We do have some audio, the ability to put audio files built in those lesson activities. There's also audio files that can be in, some of those pre-built lesson activities as well, but you can insert audio, you can insert your own media. Teachers can create their own videos and put it in that lesson activity. Ease of use, ease of use, exciting, meets the teacher's needs. So, thank you for that, and this is what we're really proud of. We're proud of that support we provide you. We led this conversation, started this conversation by telling you how much we are invested in your support, and we certainly are working to adhere through that whole implementation process with you and beyond. Dave, can you think of an ad?
Well, you know, I definitely want to ask the teachers questions real, but just kind of capitalizing on, you know, looking at a couple of those things there is, you know, we talked really the three Cs, we covered quite a bit today, or we covered it, we did a good job, thank you Sarah. Command, collage, and canvas. Command does so much in its role, and it's constantly obvious it's going to have the immersion notification capability. We have that out, it's going to be able to work with existing immersion notification systems. If that addition science department is really, you know, we're skiing one more map on campuses and out there, just knows. And so we're excited about that. But, you know, I think one of my better pieces is that collage base we gave you here for, I was that kid in school, I was a very A D B kid. And so I really struggled with the classroom, and I made honestly a good grade. As a guy in college, I got to figure out, I don't remember how I worked in, you know, in my time. And I think what I like about collage is you can take a gap week, and teachers can walk around the room, and they're no longer tethered in front of that classroom. And now they're going around, they're walking, and there's their students there. But they don't interact, I figured out how to do it with collaboration, is I would put my retention on the one, because it's so high on test scores and all. There's that positive correlation of all of those things. And I think that's what I love about collage, and it's one of the things I always have to show along our campuses, is because it really does enough enable that teacher worth of students that it empowers those kids, because now, because now they're actually, you know, they're throwing that information on the panel now, and saying, "We are not to write it, maybe so they're like, after this session, we are going to..." I just agree, I think that's just such a great tool into a school that issues every day in classroom, with those that have one or more back in town, so. But that's just sort of, you know, kind of the answer. There's some good answers or questions that I can draw up? That good job?
No, we're still here.
I've got an ad storm, so...
Warranty and product availability.
There you go, warranty, did you hear that Dave?
Yeah, what was the question, what's the warranty?
And product availability.
Yeah, and so, those are the things, so let me just, on the warranty, you come with a three-year, it can be extended until a five-year. You guys are looking at quite a bit volume, which basically you would have to put that extra, so your computers have a little charge, so. That would give you guys a total of five years on that. And as far as availability, you know, you guys are looking at a couple of different sizes, you're looking at the 65, and you're looking at the 75. It's a challenge for us, there's no doubt about it, but we're also, we're getting ads in every week. And we do have a backlog right now, but we're meeting the floors, and here we are. So, you know, what's the timeframe at the end of the day? That's really where I would put back on you guys, because I will tell you that uphill, it's a, you're probably looking at more obvious type of thing, so. Do you guys have a size that could read that version?
Yeah, just a little caveat, guys, this is the only one I had in my van, this evening, this morning, unfortunately, it's been ranked as new K+. I have video of K+ and I do believe you have your K+ in your district as well, right? So if Dave needs to bring it back, then I'll give you the handles, yes, it's all mine out of mine. I usually don't do this, I usually do it first and second, this is a different version of the panel than I think the regular panel I did. This is, sorry, this one's kind of, this is one that actually has the tabletop, so this one has the edge-to-edge class. So even if you're not looking to go into the oneies in your classroom, and a lot of these students use tabletops instead of last, last, we decided to check out scenarios. Because this will actually, this whole stand converts into tabletop. And I'll be sitting here, and Dave said, "So everything on it goes on the tabletop in that place," so just saying. How far is this converted to a tabletop, and why do you do it? So Dave, we're going to take you for a ride, okay?
Let's go.
So I'm going to take you...
I'm giving, I hope they're everywhere.
I agree. So, it literally is a remote control. And it goes down. And then it goes down. So, it's pretty unfortunate that I have the old Clear Touch panel. Like, it's literally a remote control, and you realize certain programs are better than this, that you hold it down, and, and run on one side continuously, and it literally goes down into that tabletop there. I mean, it goes a little faster, I have Gen 1, Dave, just so you know, I have Gen 1 of this one, and this one, so. Dave can bring it back and get it on.
And actually, the newer generation knows much more. Though if you had a child who was a short, who was in a wheelchair, and they were going to ask, "Well, it's nice to ask them to learn," so. That's one of the points, I know, there's plenty of studies out there that support how critical sound is in the classroom, and, you know, here obviously is really critical, right? But our new K+ actually, I remember this 2.1 Sound Mark, and basically that has two 10-watt clearers and a 15-watt over. And to say it fills the classroom, it's a machine, and at halfway of the volume, you can do, it'll actually fill that classroom. So you can roll that in bigger, and it's, we can sell this for higher education as well, on the full sound system. Because I'm not saying you put it in an auditorium and keep raising it, that's not it, but for all of those, those regular classrooms, the newer classrooms, Dave will absolutely fill that with sound.
So that's the tabletop, where it's actually a stand that, that's what the school was trying to go send at the tabletop, and it goes down, so...
I like that one, I think that one's a good one. And it already goes with some stuff that's already...
Questions, we have at London and a couple of schools, we have very short tables for every seat room. And that was the question, I was just wondering the height of it. So we have the 43-inch, and I do believe Dave has one of these as well. This is the one that puts our pre-peg, so it's the 43-inch that goes to the tabletop, and it's on, and we call it the mini vertical. So it's this kind of squeeze down into a miniature for the wheels. And so, Dave actually has one of those. Do you have one on a mini vertical stand, or you just have a 43-dip?
I did, yes, perfect.
Perfect. So you can see here, I believe Angelina is two years old there, she's my other, I have a daughter, and then I have a four-year-old and two-year-old grandson that uses it at home as well, I just don't have it. So, we can accommodate all of that. Mine is that Gen 1 is a little bit high, and that's one of the things we refer to teachers, we need to go up and lower. So we have the new one, does go down lower for those kids, the elementary kids especially. And then also, if you go with the ceiling hood, so to accommodate students in wheelchairs, and it does have this C case at the bottom. So the wheelchairs can roll up to it, and this will come to your classroom, so we make sure that accessibility is really important for students. So we have different versions of that table itself. And again, you may not deploy it on every classroom, certainly hard to manage in places for checkout scenarios, we've seen a lot of districts do that. I've had, I have a high school that actually bought those little tabletops, and they use them in group parks. They have three or four in the classroom, and the kids are working, casting to them, and collaborating in those small groups, and over the campus as well. So just something to keep in mind.
I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask. One is how many kids can interact at the same time? I saw four, but can more than four, or just, is it limited to four or what?
So you can go in four simultaneous zones, but the panel itself will take up to 20 points of simultaneous touch. And so I will have teachers help put two or three students in every zone, and they're collaborating with those zones, because they're, you know, touching and touching and taking...
Okay, and the other question is our licensure. How long are we licensed for with your product, and renewal and all that type cost?
There's no renewal, it's licensed forever for the life of the panel, and even if the panel goes bad, you can still use your Snowflake licenses. You know, this panel just lasts up to 10 to 15 years, right?
Okay.
There is no annual subscription, there's no renewal weekly, order those licensed to you, we show you how to manage the bin house. There's a CSV upload that you can do every year, every last year, if you want to do that, to refresh the users, allow teachers, including new teachers. It's pretty easy that way in terms of, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we don't want to dip one down, you want to be also want to make sure that you get. That's why we do the buy for panel, right? Because maybe you forget to do the refresh, you know, every year, so you're still, it's going to be expensive, so you're probably never going to use a license again.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Are this for board, or do you prefer a panel? Buy for panel, buy for board, yeah. So, you buy 50 of them, fine, you get 250 of them, and again, that's all perpetual, there's no annual process, there's no, like that. You know, I was a teacher, I was an inclusion teacher, I've said different kind of classes, and I said, "I get the teacher that uses push-ups in my classrooms." So that's really important, because you're accommodating everybody in your district, like I said, even your instructional, like technology, or whatever, you're kind of doing parts of the classroom licenses, so. Because principals love using the public, by the way, just to put that out there, or use that not as polling. So you guys tend to name it. I could have unshed the box, and I would have made that polling completely anonymous. So now you can get some honest feedback from parents, I have teachers using it for parents' evening conferences night, or for the house, it's completely anonymous. You can also deploy those polls and just send that joint code, put it in your new classroom, and leave that all open for three days, or two hours, or whatever, and tell students, "It was a special time frame." So we have a lot of, we have some teachers that really created, just sort of all had, you know, this passive, have, use that technology, so. Any other questions?
To interact with, because you said it's a Windows 10, but if we opt not to purchase the onboard computer, how does it interact with the educator's PC that's in the room? Is it just HDMI cabling?
Yeah, it's HDMI and touch cable, so there's two cables. The touch cable's only a USB, an ATC, or an ITC, USB, literal square type, so you can USB and use HDMI that, and that's usually something that they'll do on install, right? And then that literally just becomes a second monitor in that scenario, that Clear Touch panel.
But it's an interactive monitor still, even though we're using RBCs?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And if you wanted to run in standby mode, you could, but most teachers will just mirror, right? And just, you know, have their teacher stuff, and not show it from their console panel, but it literally becomes a touchscreen monitor that exists in my system.
Are we still able to use phones, tablets to sticky into the Clear Touch monitor and play it through the, so we...
Yeah. Now, what I've got, teacher, are you talking about for remote learning?
Well, let's say the teacher wanted to walk around the room, holding her new Samsung Android tablet, but yet we're not running your onboard computer, we're using the classroom's current existing computer. Can we still, she drive everything from her tablet, her phone, whatever, his or her?
Yeah, with collage.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and collage again, that's our casting, but I can also mirror the panel back to my device, that's an opposite direction. So I can cast up, and I can take this and put it on my Android tablet, and then walk around the room, and that makes me remote as well.
But without the, without the onboard PC, what I'm getting at, let's cut to the chase. Without the onboard PC, we lose no functionality if we're using our PC?
Correct.
Okay.
You'll install Snowflake software on there, the teachers will run in that Windows environment, the collage runs on Android. That casting runs on the Android OS. So you don't even have to worry about any of that. That runs, that, that's an app that goes at the top of everything, it's running in that Android native environment, it's like those Android applications, and everything else are on that side, so. Because now that I have a connected computer or not, I'll still have a collage, I'll still have my Android one.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so, to connect, in my sense of, to that, if we don't have the onboard, I will not have to have a new device, or are you going to connect it to the, to your, connect to that?
Yeah, we would just connect, yeah, we would connect to that collage, ask me to sign it in my Android one. And instead of showing the Android here, I would mirror the panel back here. So it's back. And then you'll be able to access it just here, and all that stuff, you don't need Android side.
Is connection wireless?
For the casting, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that all happens across the wireless network infrastructure, so just keep that in mind.
Let's just make sure we didn't have Bluetooth crashes.
No, yeah, no Bluetooth at all, it's literally the connection, and it's pretty solid. So that collage, Dave, you can speak to that a little bit, that collage, and how it's, you know, it's literally, they can zoom through the ground, they're all panel. Okay, so, I'm a law school. Uh, the collage is our, it's native to Clear Touch, right? It's built by the same people that build our panels, and it's built right into the native operating system. You know, it's that Android, and it just works. It's drop dead simple, and it just works. I have bed, my three and a half years of Clear Touch, I've got one feet of collage, because the teachers figure out, "Out the panel, out the disc, it's asking." We talk about it, and we need to practice it, but I don't have to spend, you know, two hours showing the batteries, it's just a, that was a long answer, very long. Any other?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to say thank you for coming and doing this demonstration, and I thank the lot to come up here and do this. And I'm so excited that our students and staff, faculty, could have the opportunity of such great technology, you know, have it up, Dave. We certainly do need that, and we really do appreciate your contribution tonight.
Do we have another question on the back?
Yes.
Another question in the back? Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, I was trying to, I want to take the board. I let you, I don't want to say it, I let you. You said to use collage, I didn't. You said you saw a, I didn't. I was, I'm sorry. You're fine. Look, I'm letting you back your phone. There you go. So for your phones and your tablets, you drive it from your device.
Uh, this is how you play.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so students are not allowed to have, you have to be sick.
Yeah, yeah, because I have. Yeah, now you can add, open both if you want. Okay. Yeah, you would have to have them more, like I said, you can walk around rooms, these are my list of issues. And they have the other choices you, right? Alright, Dave, I don't know if you can still hear me or if we lost you, are you there?
Uh, I'm here.
Sarah, one more question.
Yep.
Was there another question?
Yes.
This is final one.
Is that based on that, because that's based on the stuff on the address? It's all in the cloud, and you actually will connect the panel with an app on the Android side of the panel. So there's an app, we give you a unique code to put in the Android app on the Android side. And then from the app, it goes up to the cloud and it connects. Now, I'm not as technical as I think your question is. So if you could just write it down for me and I'll send it off to our tech support team and get you some exact answers to that, because I think you're probably talking a little more technical today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the transition, do we need a minute for a break, or are we good to slide right in?
Ricky's saying yes.
Let's take a break.
I think Ricky's showing better, his kidneys are killing it.
What's that?
Send you a message to have a reset.
Oh, well, Dr. Rice, we're doing fine.
What's that? That's right. Ah, you should.
I may have to go away with my coat. Information, fundraisers, I'd be ready to go over our next meeting this way. I'm like, we'll have to do all those dates.
I would just say, this dates, this award meeting, uh, important agenda, not only before our next meetings, I'd be there for this. The only thing I would want to give this change, we'll have to put on the calendar for communication. And we did make one correction this evening with the individuals who were standing. That, um, Matt Olive is matching up with Keen.
Where is that? What time is this complication, is it seven thirty-five, breakfast?
Breakfast is seven thirty-five, the complication's started at around six thirty.
Can you get me a slice of pancake right quick?
Anywhere you want to, I just asked you. Want everybody to have equal?
Thank you, Sarah, for that, we appreciate that. Um, now we have SMART. Justin Stevenmer is here with SMART, and Maria Klein is here with Smarter Systems, so, thank you.
Alright, I got that. Good evening, everybody. Hope you're well, thank you for coming to the institute, man. Something inside there, suit, in July, North Carolina, it's pretty good. Uh, with that, my name is Justin, I work for Smart Technologies, uh, to manufacture, uh, this SMART board that you see. Uh, Smart's been around for forty years. We extensively category, interact with touch displays. We've been in your district for years. Personally, I've been supporting this district for about eight years. Uh, so it's a little bit about me, I'm from Denver, North Carolina, down in Lincoln County. And with me, uh, we have Maria Klein, who is with Smarter Systems. Uh, Smarter Systems is our local integration partner, uh, that would handle the installation. So she is with us today, I may call on her a few times. Uh, can everybody's seat handle okay? Everybody back there, is everyone sitting okay? We need to, we need to. Well, I wasn't worried about you. We need, we need, while you guys still can back there, we got her. Okay, uh, I gave each of you a, a package, and you'll find that package on your, uh, desk. Next, we may. As I mentioned, Smarter Systems is our local integration partner, so your official quotes will come from them for the purchase and installation of this product. Uh, that being said, uh, Smart Technologies has made an offer to Stokes County schools. And you can read through all this package if you want to. The important details of that are highlighted on the very first page, under the executive summary. Okay, uh, quickly, just as a few of the questions came up earlier, uh, what we are offering to the district is a district license to our software that is all inclusive, all encompassing for the lifetime of the hardware deployment, okay? Uh, over a ten year period, that would equate to approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars savings for the district. Uh, below that, we're offering a seven year assure warranty. Uh, assure warranty is just the name of our warranty. What that includes, uh, as part of the assure program, is access to advanced remote troubleshooting directly from Smart, uh, tier two and tier three support technicians. Uh, that also includes, uh, Smart pay in the case we identified something needed the RMA. We would handle two-way shipping. We would also pay for Smart authorized technicians to come on site, take down the bad unit, put the new one on the wall. So it'll all be handled by Smart here for seven years. Uh, you'd also have access to Smart remote management for the lifetime of the warranty, or the life of the warranty. Uh, Smart Remote Management is going to give you as administrators central, uh, commanding control of board fleets of Smart panels. And I'll give you kind of a, a quick glimpse of what exactly that looks like. Uh, finally, last one I want to highlight here is offered by Smart is a complimentary professional development package delivered by Smart. Uh, there is many different pathways that could look like. What we would do is work with the district technology team, instruction technology team, C and I, and figure out what that needs to look like, okay? Is that a series of face-to-face, uh, lessons? Is that a trainer model? Is that Smart supporting in the background with virtual settings? So that's kind of the, uh, very high level details of the offer package from Smart Technologies to the district. I have to take questions on the outside, or we can pull some in, if there are guys who want to do it. Okay, then I'll go ahead and move on, okay? What you're looking at here is the panel, the technology part is valued in Smart. It's called the Smart MX two seventy-five, uh, seventy-five because this one is seventy-five inches. The date of this is the MX series. Uh, the important thing to know about the MX series is that it's made and acted by Smart. All of the software is developed by Smart. You're not going out to other parties, you're part of the same software made wherever. Everything is done in-house, okay? Um, and with that, we tend to harness on the power of connection. What we want to do is kind of build into your existing workflows that you already have, that the teachers are comfortable with. What do I mean by that? I mean that we tie into your Google credentials that you already have, okay? Uh, you'll notice in this upper left-hand corner, right up here, I'm actually signed into the panel. You can see I've signed in here, I did this previously, just saved us a few minutes, right? Uh, but if I wasn't signed in, it'd be a little smiley face up here, I click on that, and then I get the options, and you click Sign In With Google, okay? All I'm going to do at that point is use the existing Google credentials to teachers already have. And then I use that, uh, Stokes County Gmail address and password. And what I've done when I do that is I'm signing into it here. I'm essentially creating a user profile, if you will, that is tied back to my Google Drive. So that when I sign in to this panel, uh, all of these applications that you see over here on the recent files, everything is tied to that user profile. Um, so say if I sign out, and user can't sign in with our user profile, everything would populate according to, uh, that user profile. When you decide to.
So if I'm a teacher in a high school, and my classroom is three different classrooms, I sign in, my stuff shows up wherever I go.
Yes, sir, that's the idea, yes, that's exactly the idea, okay? And how we do that is leverage the, uh, power of the cloud in order to do that, okay? Um, but this is what it looks like, okay? So I told you I've signed in with a, uh, Google credentials, Gmail address here. Really easy to get started, all I can do is drop into this file zone, you see right here? Let's set, say to this, uh, dropdown, my files there, you can see this is integrated already with Google Drive, which many of the teachers are already using. Click up in Google Drive right here, it's taking me out to my Google Drive. And you can see this leverages, uh, the idea of single sign-on, right? So I'm asking teachers to sign in one place, I don't want them to have to go to another place to sign in again. It's just wasting transition and instruction time. So I'm already signed in here, and as I'm out here, right, uh, you like to be able to work and play with any file type. Teachers maybe use it, okay? So right now, I want to pull up, say a Google slide file, if I want to do that, just check on this file here, double click. And then this summer fun Google Drive file is going to pull up, and I can choose my Google Drive file from here, okay? Uh, but the other thing that I can do from Google Drive is I want to grab a file that's out of the cloud storage, have it delivered to the device itself. It's really easy for me to, say, click on this PDF file right here. And I'm going to do is click and hold it, and whenever you do that, what's going to happen is this Google Drive name pops up that the teachers are very familiar with. I can click on the download icon right here. Click Download, it'll just queue up this download, the Download button right there. And then, again, now what I've done is accessed cloud-based storage, Google Drive, now set that file to this device. And if I go into now my downloaded files, you see the Beach Map looks filed and just downloaded today, it's right here. But I click that open, click that open right there, and click this open. This populates up, and right here, it'll be able to now see, there's that PDF file we grabbed on G Drive. Now using this in the classroom, I can, if I want to pick up this bed and begin annotating on top, it's PDF. And writing them, okay? So that's one way that I can gain access to it. Another reason that I may want to grab a file from G Drive, set it to the panel, so I'm just working outside of Google Drive as well, okay? Um, I can connect your devices to this panel, right? From the panel, it's the same content to you. If you want to give this a shot and see what it looks like, all I can do is click over the Super Off tab right here. And if you'd like, go ahead and take advice and give this a shot. Go to the website, heboesmart.com. When you get out of heboesmart.com, go ahead and join as a guest and enter the class ID you guys see up here, three one six zero six. You'll be brought into this, so if everybody just, a moment or two, go ahead and get logged in. So you take a look at what this field file. Alright, so we had a camera, the first one, Delilah is it? Hit Delilah. Ah, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Try again, lift it up.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, you've downloaded the, to the panel itself.
That's correct.
Will the panel, let's say for example, teachers out as a sub, can the sub access it from the panel? Or is there like a generic login for the sub?
Sub could, yes, sub could, yes. If I wanted to, I could get subs included at the time, I could download that file to the panel itself. It's, it's called guest look, right? So I didn't know my user profile.
Will the panel, let's say, for example, teachers out as a sub? Can the sub access it from the panel or is there like a generic login from the sub?
Sub could, yes, sub could, yes. If I wanted to, I meant sub's pointed at the panel. I could download that file to the panel itself is, it's called guest load, right?
Yes.
So, I'd even in my user profile. How many of you do that? Yep. Okay, so we've got a few of us in here, so I'm going to go ahead and start sharing here. When I click the start sharing button, this will load up and then in just a moment, you'll see this populates on your device, okay? So, about just a minute, and now on your device, you should be seeing this very file I'm in right now. And as I click, you'll see those annotations are all very good, all right? So, live, real time, you see that happening, okay? Uh, hit the homepage real quick here. Anytime I hit that homepage, it'll take me back to this right here. This is what we call our IQ input. It's just our version of that embedded operating system that comes with the panel. If I'm working off of this panel, I do not have to tie in a computer to the panel, okay? I can always do that as an option if I want to. I can do it in a second minute. Right now, I'm working just off the embedded system. So, I'm going to go ahead and click open this whiteboard right now, okay? This pops open and, uh, what I'm going to do, if you pay attention to this, the user interface looks very similar to what we just did with that PDF. So, much so, I should actually already all tie into this class. So, if I click open this student roster here and start sharing the whiteboard, you'll now see this whiteboard being shared up. What I like about that is it was seamless transition. You didn't have to ask me to sign out and sign back in or go to a different webpage or anything like that. It's all tied to that user profile of the teacher, right? So, as we work through this here, I go back in here, but I pick up the pen, right, it's just going to be a, you weren't like that. When I taught, I taught social studies, asked for one math problem. I'll probably do it two more times tonight to experiment with that, please. But what you see, pick up the pen, I write, you see that flow through those devices, okay? Uh, again, pick up the pen and I can have multiple students writing on this, working at the same time. So, if I wanted to, so just ride that out, now two students working on this, I'm able to use it, okay? Uh, these panels support, uh, twenty simultaneous touchpoints. What we focus on though is not the number of touchpoints that the panel has, but the number of what we call simultaneous tools used at one time. Uh, meaning if I want to, I can have multiple students, teacher, whatever up here, one meeting. Here, you say one moving this one around, or over there, right, and one working, or there erasing that, and they're not fighting each other for control, or control being used at the same time, okay? We can continue building this out there. Go right down here, just click up in the spot, cross-reference grid, and if you take a look at this, uh, there are many ready-made activities inside of this application, including our version of the pulling activity that we call Shavada, okay? So, you're already in my class. You can go ahead and start this for the class. And, uh, after this, I'm driving back to Denver, North Carolina. I need ideas of where to grab dinner. If you could, please just tell me, using your device, what is the best restaurant in the general vicinity from here to Denver, North Carolina? I can stop that and see, okay? Again, just do that for your device real quick. You should see a text box that you can write your answer. Right below that, a send response button. And we'll, we'll see this popping up. So, Delilah says hi. Hi, Delilah, okay? Everybody, you've got a minute to make a contribution here. And you'll notice, okay, right here, Village Chatter, Ryan's Steakhouse. Okay, awesome. Texas Roadhouse, good, good, okay? As this are populating, what I can do, if I need to, is pause this activity. And at that time, when I get pause, your screen grays up, okay? So, if I need to redirect the discussion inside the classroom, I'm easily able to do so and say, you know what, I forgot to say nothing with the drive-through. I don't want to go anywhere tonight because of drive-through. So, bear that in mind for your answer. Hit resume and you're back at it, answering this activity. Uh, this is also devices, most of it because it's web-based. So, I can do this inside my classroom. I could be doing this virtually, hybrid. Uh, doesn't matter the network students are connected to. These answers are going to flow through, okay? Uh, as we're going through this, I want to make any of these do it full screen. All I do is click the circle. I can make that do a full screen, make that easier for our classroom discussion, okay? I have to say this too. I can organize these, I like categories, starting with those around Village Chatter seems popular. Because I can then organize these, all of a sudden, I've got this really cool way to foster a conversation in your classroom about the content we're going to be looking at, right? Uh, and all of a sudden, you may say, Texas Roadhouse, but Village Chatter. Uh, and you go, oh, like, it's more like Ryan's Steakhouse. Whatever it is, tends to foster those conversations and conversations, right? Going to continue to click through this, go back here, get working with this whiteboard application. Organizers are available here. Want to roll down to say the spend diagram, like there. And we don't think teachers should spend a ton of time creating templates and backgrounds and things. Put a lot of those into the workflows. So, this is in here. All I do is teach it. Uh, this is a big week for me. This is December's shark week. Uh, I can't get enough of it. So, if I want to do an activity on sharks versus whale, okay? So, how we do that was to annotate on top of that, this is still flowing through to your devices, right? And then if I want to, say, easily from the, uh, whiteboard application, I want to look for a specific whale. So, what I can do without needing this application is run an image search for whales. So, out that, I'm simply going to click on the image and that then populates into the workspace here. Let's go ahead and do that one right there. That populates. So, then if I need to click and resize that, roll that into whales, okay? Uh, likewise, we'll just click this open, roll it over to videos. Uh, so Smart Technologies has a longstanding partnership with Google slash YouTube. And our licensing agreement with them is that if you route YouTube videos through SMART software, whether it's this package I'm showing you on the board right now, a SMART notebook or online lesson delivery software, there are no advertisements you should see. It's no beginning, middle, end of video advertisements, no sidebar, no comments. This video then will not autoplay onto the next video YouTube is assigned to this playlist, okay? Now, because, uh, I can now send this through to your devices that are still connected, I've just created, no matter where that student is, what they're on, a safe space for them to view this YouTube video without worrying about them getting into advertisements or anything that may pop up on YouTube, okay? Questions with that? Okay, good. We'll keep it on the bond here. And one more thing to pop up here, this is also, uh, we like to focus a lot on math activities built in, right? So, if I roll open this, I can do the activity right here. Uh, so what we call a base ten block activity, right? So, I wanted to quickly show you how can we get to a sum of twenty-one using the information available to us here. Go through the base of the class, grab the pen, and send that off. Okay, all right.
How, how is this communicating? Is this through the same network or is this just network? So, if I turned off internet and just went data, or if I had a kid at home?
Yeah.
Am I still connected because of the code?
So, this is also a network act, not, okay? So, it doesn't matter if I'm here on the Stokes County network and you are at home on your home network and you are on data on the cell phone, it's all going to flow through because it's web-based, it's not network-dependent on anything. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else?
I'm done with questions. I just want to make sense.
Okay. Okay. I want to hit on one thing real quick just because it came open or came up, uh, a moment ago during the, uh, the other demo here. So, I'm going to go back here with this file library. And you see this, there's this little icon here called Lumeo. Uh, the details are not important, but it's part of the software package that we have offered to the district, okay? And essentially what Lumeo is, is an online lesson delivery software where I, as a teacher, can take various file types, be it SMART notebook files, PowerPoints, Google slides, PDFs, upload them to the platform and then, uh, summon them to the devices. You're going to click this one open right here, okay? And once I get in here, we'll start sharing this. So, apologize, sometimes devices sign out after a moment, so this is just signing back in real quick here, okay? And let's see, populates up, showing exactly what I mean. What I'm going to do is, if you ask a question sort of further, can I drive content in my classroom from this device and show you what that looks like? I'll click this one open here. And I'm now sharing this file to your devices. So, for those of you who are still signing in this classroom, uh, what you'll see here is that as I change the page on this device and I'm driving content to this device, whether it's a iPad, a cell phone, tablet, notebook, whatever it is, this is reflected not only on the panel itself, but also on your device, okay? Uh, so much so that as I come in here, I wanted to then say, grab this pen and ink. You can see that ink flowed through the panel on your device. So, I'm able to remotely drive content in my classroom. You'll definitely see it together, the panel, everything is, okay? So, sometimes I get excited and trip on the wires. I'm going to hit that, uh, homepage one more time and bring up the page here. Um, again, we get asked all the time, we work with additional applications, different math tools, the answer is yes, right? Uh, so you see I have some of them populated under my favorite applications on the scale. If I went to open, say, Desmos or Geo, because I have both of those up here. Click open Desmos here. Uh, this is a graphing calculator. And much less see as this opens up, I have the option here to input an equation. And I'm not in the front, right? So, if I wanted to, uh, say, uh, two x, I've got that graph. I want to enter a, say, another expression here, uh, one of the x squared for gravel. I'm able to leverage different math applications, different math tools, all built into the